On is called to order the Majority Leader, you're recognized for motions.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
That motion without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we reorder the second reading file and to place on the top of the second reading file, Bill 319 is by Senator Palacios, an act to authorize private ambulance service providers to provide emergency medical services. And then the second bill number would be Bill 377, an act to add a new title relative to designating all excess land returns by the U.S. government to the government of Guam as agricultural. And then a bill by, actually, I missed one. There's, um, do you have Bill 328?
Okay.
There's another bill, Madam Speaker, but I have to get the title.
So far, 319 and 377, uh, three, I mean, Speaker Ben, I think there was one bill.
I believe it's Bill 328, and that's relative to, um...
Which bill number?
It's 435 is the...
435.
But then there's other, another bill, but it's not, doesn't seem to be on the second reading file list. Bill 328, the, no, the Senator Rodriguez, the onsite, it's, there's no description of it. Madam Speaker, Bill 328 is relative to providing for onsite license for wine tasting events. That's the bill number, and the next bill is Bill...
And that's by Senator Rodriguez?
Yes, ma'am. And then the next bill is 435 by Speaker Pangolinan, and it's relative to negotiating and procuring health insurance services for the government of Guam. So those are the few bills that our colleagues have asked that we have some...
So on, on the motion then to place, every number, to place these bills in the top of the second reading file are Bill 319 by Senator Palacios, 377 by Senator Duñez, 328 by Senator Rodriguez, and 435 by Speaker Pangolinan. On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
My next motion, Madam Speaker, is to place on the legislature's consent calendar the appointment of Mr. Monti Mafnes to serve as Director of Land Management. On Friday, I advised the body that, I've learned of a meeting that, a Toronto Land Trust Commission meeting that he had, where three of, two of the three members have expired. I spoke with him Friday. I spoke with Mr. Mafnes again this morning, this afternoon, and the Committee of Oversight, Speaker Pangolinan spoke to him as well. Apparently, there's, um, we're not confused, but there's some confusion from probably his perspective, Madam Speaker, where it requires 90 calendar plus three legislative days, and that person, after the person's term has expired, and acting holdover capacity until that person or another person is appointed by Magallán Guahan and confirmed by the legislature. And if you just read this at first, just on the surface, it may seem like if the individual has expired, that that individual remains a member of that Board of Commission until such time the governor appoints and the legislature confirms. Now, now, for those of us who do know, know that the maximum number of time a member, a person has been appointed to Board of Commission, the maximum number of time that he or she can serve there is 90 calendar plus three legislative days. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable in asking this body to move forward on this nomination, and I make the motion at this time to place him in the legislative concurrence file, and then when we get there, I'll be happy to move it to the voting file. So that's my first motion.
So the motion then is to place Monti, nominee Monti Mesa for the Director of the, I mean, Mafnes, why do you keep saying that? Monti Mafnes, oh God, that, he's going to be really turning over on the consent calendar without any objections, so ordered.
And my next motion is to place, um...
And I wrote his name.
On the appointment of Mr. George Santos to serve as Director of, of Department of Labor. My office has filed the committee report, and we're also able to proceed at this time in the consent calendar.
So on the motion and to place George Santos for the Department of Labor Director without any objections, so ordered.
And Mr. Alfredo Antolin to serve as Director of AHRD, that committee report has also been filed in the consent calendar.
So also to place then Alfredo Antolin as, on the consent calendar as nominee for the Director of AHRD. On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So can proceed to legislative concurrence?
So the motion then to place the, these nominees, these three nominees then to legislative concurrence?
From legislative concurrence to the voting file.
To the voting file. Any objections? Objections, so ordered.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. This time, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to the second reading file.
On that motion without objections, so ordered. We are on the second reading file, on the top of the agenda, it recognized, the author, Senator Palacios, on Bill Number 319.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 319 be placed on the third reading file for purpose of discussion and...
And you'd like to speak on it?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill 319 is a proposed legislation in response to the continuing shortage of ambulances to serve the need of our community. Current private ambulance services are not allowed to run emergencies, not because they don't have the capability or the ability to do so, but because the law permits only GFD ambulance to provide the services. And this is, of course, under Section 72105 of the Emergency Medical Services statute. However, GFD has not been able to provide adequate services for the last 10 years, Madam Speaker, due to funding and shortage of personnel. So last year, the government entered into a short-term lease for five ambulances from the private sector. Now, the adequate, rather, adequate services would, would be needed, would need at least eight working ambulance, according to the chief, and there are 12 stations, and it says that actually the ideal situation would be one ambulance per station. But at least there was a time when there were only one or two or three, but now with seven running at any one time and one as a backup, we are pretty, we have done enough at this point. But this is very temporary, Madam Speaker. Currently, private ambulance services are limited to providing only non-emergencies, and the operators, Madam Speaker, are all EMS certified. So Bill 319 proposes to authorize private ambulance service providers to make emergency runs upon certification by the Department of Public Health and Social Services, Emergency Medical Services Commission, EMS Commission, that the ambulances and operators have been trained and meet the standards established by the EMS Commission. And technically, the amendment actually, Madam Speaker, is listed on Page 3, beginning on line 16, where it says that the provision of this section, meaning the restriction to operating emergency services, only restricted, or rather, only authorized the Guam Fire Department. The amendment occur on line 16, and the provision of this section do not prevent a private entity from providing emergency medical services, subject, and that's where the government control comes in, subject to the certification requirement of the EMS Commission for the provision of such service and to include emergency vehicle operator certification. And this is, Madam Speaker, the training for ambulance, Governor of Guam ambulance operators and police officers, to be able to drive those vehicles in an emergency and, and minimize the possibility for a collision. It's a very advanced training. So anyone that would be allowed to provide private emergency ambulance services should first, the ambulance must be certified as being equipped with all this necessity to bring the ambulance. And I understand, Madam Speaker, the checklist for certification is actually six pages, and conducted, of course, by the authorities of the EMS Commission. Then, after that, then, of course, the operators should be certified by what is called the evac by, by the Guam Police Department. So we need to amend that, of course, to include that, but now that that amendment occurs, then now the motor vehicle statutes, the speeding limitation, the U-rattle way, the running through a red light, because the emergency vehicles are all authorized, or rather exempted from, from these requirements, then concurrently, this statute would have to be amended to make the process complete. And so allowing the private ambulance to provide both emergency and normal runs, Madam Speaker, will greatly increase the ability of such services, the availability of such services for when our people needed it. And I ask, of course, my colleague to support Bill 319, and let us alleviate the recurring problem of inadequate ambulance services. So all these things is, now remain to be done. Again, we have seen that, at the expiration of the current list of the five ambulance, if it's, if it's gonna be, I guess, extended, then fine, but if it should revert to the owners, then you know that the private owners would have this capability. Now, if they would be allowed, and again, this would be probably as needed basis, probably the use of this would be triggered probably by a request from the Guam Fire Department, at least it would be available. And so hopefully, one day, our own fire department would provide maybe adequate ambulance services, and not relying, of course, on the private enterprise, but either way, it will provide the people of Guam a wider choice of service and a wider availability of ambulance service. And I move that Bill, of course, 319 be placed on third reading, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Palacios on the motion. Senator Guthrie, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I think this bill is very timely, and I think that as long as the proper criteria are established in terms of the modalities that must be met in order to qualify to be considered an eligible ambulance service, then I think we should support this bill. You know, Guam is coming of age, our population is increasing, the demands for these services are increasing, but the resources of our government to provide these services to meet the demands really has been very difficult, and in some ways has diminished because of limited resources. So this is one of the areas that makes sense for the private sector to participate in, as long as they meet all the certification requirements, not only in terms of the vehicles, but those who man the vehicles to provide these critical life-saving services. So I'm pleased to support the bill, and I hope my colleagues will support it as well. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the motion? Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think that I certainly support the legislation. I think what I would have loved to have seen was a little bit more detail with regards to the analysis by the administration on what the impact this will have on the budget. This is only made feasible now because, of course, that the ambulance services have a fee schedule attached to it, and so the Guam Fire Department can now, and has been, or will be starting to bill the insurance companies for ambulance runs. And what this would allow is that when they don't have an ambulance, I guess the envisioned end of this legislation is that, that you can call on a non-emergency ambulance who may be at their private owner's garage, and if they're not busy, they can respond when a government of Guam ambulance is not available, or fire department ambulance is not available, and then the bill gets sent to the health insurance company or the individual. And so I hope that the governor, you know, may look at this and maybe just have BBMR provide him with the analysis, because it really doesn't state very, very clearly, I think, in, in their analysis. Now, the governor asks, of course, that we don't enact legislation without funding source, and so we need to take a look at what, how many runs ambulance do for the MIP program, et cetera, and then do the analysis of what the impact is on the budget. And what we're looking for is, is, you know, what, what do they say it's going to, to impact in terms of the budget? And I'm trying to look for the committee report. I don't recall the analysis done on it, and certainly I hope that the Department of Administration, as well as Department of Public Health and Department of Public, Department of, the Guam Fire Department, will advise the governor prior to his action of what the impact on this will be, so that the governor can knowingly then decide whether or not to sign this even without the identified funding source to implement this program. So I just want to caution, you know, the body on that, caution the governor, that we may be sending this out knowing that the analysis provided by BBMR was incomplete, and that he begin the process of asking them to provide him a more complete analysis before he takes action on the bill. Thank you, and Sutus Massey.
You're welcome, Speaker Pangolinan. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak? There being none. Senator Palacios, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 319 actually, very simply, would just, I guess, allow a private operator, a private ambulance operator for, you know, for, to provide such an emergency service. And essentially, people that needed this service would have two options, either call the Guam Fire Department, or just call directly a company that already has a certified operators and a certified ambulance to run emergency. So it might probably amount to maybe outsourcing to some degree, but not necessarily outsourcing, because, again, anybody can, can call either, either the, like I said, the Guam Fire Department, or the provider, the private provider, in an emergency situation. And so right now, even if I want to call a, a private provider, notwithstanding that probably Guam Fire Department has, would have adequate service at this time, I cannot, because they are not allowed to do so. So it, it actually more for accommodation to patients that need the service and, and really nothing else. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I move that Bill 319 be moved.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the motion to place Bill 319 to third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Rispio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we go back to motions. I forgot to, I failed to place one bill on the agenda, and that's Bill 405, and it's dealing with the shark fin issue.
On that motion, notwithstanding the House rules, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. I move to place Bill 405 on the second reading file right after Bill 435, and it's introduced by the Vice Speaker and myself, and it's relative to the definition of the animal commonly known as a shark.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I know, notwithstanding the House rules, revert, move that we revert back to the second reading file. Thank you.
Not any objections, so ordered. We will continue. Senator Duñez, you're recognized for Bill 377.
Buenas tardes, and Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. Malaguzu ta pega este printeponi 377-31. Gimina tres na tinaita, isam malaguzu lokita diskuti este na printeponi. Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm humbly requesting to pass, or to place Bill 377-31 into the third reading and discuss the merits of the bill.
Gracias.
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. Bonito pagu i sininamo i, it looks good, color azul.
Gracias.
Madam Speaker, this Bill 377 kind of takes me back to an experience that I had at Department of Land Management, where I'll kind of express two instances in which I was, had the pleasure of presiding over. And that was the introduction of legislation that allowed for the Puntun dos Amantes land returned to the, to the families, the original landowners, originally possessed by the federal government. And the good work that this body did in opening up the door to allow those families to realize the highest and best use of their property, and seeing it come to its end by being here and going through hearings that were held by our good Speaker Ben and the good members of this body in the 30th Guam Legislature, and seeing that through, and seeing really how happy those families were to finally experience that and, and have, you know, their, their dream realized as returning property, and also having that opportunity to get a zoning that, that they desired, that they needed, and that was appropriate and relative to the zoning of the properties in the area, Madam Speaker. And it also reminds me of a time when I sat down with the planning staff, and we talked to members of the Port Authority of Guam management, and the returns of lands also that this body was involved in. And I remember sitting down with several families, the Unzuk family, the Leon Guerrero's, and I remember them expressing to us, please, if at all possible, ensure that when this land's returned, if it's gonna be zoned, please zone it agriculture A, because they had wonderful plans for the future, but they did not necessarily want to have to be placed in a tax bracket of some of the types of activities that were contiguous to them in the area, of course, being the Port Authority, military continuing to own several properties in which they're doing commercial activities such as fuel bunkering and fuel farms, and all kinds of different zonings, to include a cemetery also somewhat contiguous to that area. And, and also because I remember speaking to some of those family members, saying, "We're not sure that we have grand big plans. We wait, we wait, we may actually want to give this property back to our family members." You know, "We may just farm," or, or use it, you know, so, so that, you know, they can have some sort of ecotourism or the like, and, and really not want to do anything commercially with it. So, Madam Speaker, I'm happy to say, after working with my colleagues, we arrived, I believe, at a very good consensus here, and that is where lands are returned to the government of Guam from the federal government, and eventually through Ancestral Lands Commission, going to be returned to original landowners. And so now there's an option. Now they have the option of having it zoned agricultural and, and choosing that as they go forward, you know, because they don't want to pay the higher taxes, and they're not sure what they're gonna do. They may subdivide it and, and look to keep it in their family for, for generations to come. And then others where it makes sense, where the majority contiguous properties are zoned for whatever purpose. It could be R1, R2, all the way up to industrial, simply, you know, just similarly like what happened up in Puntun dos Amantes. So I believe this is the best possible compromise. It's probably only a few families at this time, but they're in much need, Madam Speaker. Many of them have issues where they, they need to, some of them are actually in agreements if, if this goes through, to be able to work with developers, and, and they need it for their families and for their future, and some of them are not feeling so well. So, Madam Speaker, I simply ask that my colleagues consider this, and I thank you and other members of the majority who worked with me and made me understand the difference between, you know, agriculture as, as making it, making the best sense, being the lowest zoning, but maybe not making the best sense for those who have property whereby the contiguous lots are actually zoned at a much higher level, that they should get the same designation and shouldn't be undervalued. So I thank the body for that, and before closing, Madam Speaker, I would like to humbly request that Senator Ben Pangolinan be number two cosponsor, and also Senator Rory Rispio for his suggestion as well be number three on this bill. Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on 377, and I ask my colleagues to please help support me. Thank you.
On that motion then for the cosponsorship of Senator Pangolinan and Senator Rispio without any objection, not you? Okay, so, okay, okay. So Senator, Senator Rispio then is number two, no objections, so ordered. On the motion, Speaker Pangolinan, like to speak on the motion?
Yes. Basically, Madam Speaker, we agreed to, I had moved this forward with the assurance from the good author, that we were gonna get the maps and the, the property lot numbers of all of the properties that would be rezoned by this, and he assured me that we were gonna have that Monday, I think last week. And, you know, I don't have that information. Again, I'm uncomfortable with moving forward with this blanket. I propose this additional language that could give flexibility to landowners, but I really think that we need to know exactly where these properties are located for those that have been returned, that are still unzoned, that will be rezoned agriculture, and that the map should be present. I think we've asked ourselves to, to provide that when we move forward on land issues, that we have as much information as we can. As a matter of fact, as I mentioned, the committee has made it a policy that on rezoning, we solicit the input of all of the departments and agencies that will have that review process if it was to go through the Guam Land Use Commission. And we just passed a law that required land management for at least to have a 45-day period to give us their recommendation, basically, on the status of the properties, what is available, the surrounding area, and uses. And, you know, that, to me, is something that the good author authored, but we don't want to follow it, you know, we haven't even followed it once yet. And so, and especially when it's, we're doing all lands, we're not doing just one piece of property, we're doing everything. So the impact is really quite intensive, even though it's still agricultural zone, because at a later time, the landowner may come in, and, and we don't even know when and how long that option exists in the bill in terms of when it would do so. And we didn't make that change because I, I guess the intention of the author was he wants it to be open-ended, and so we didn't question that intent. But I think, once again, you know, the committee pushed, pushed this out based upon the request of the author, with the understanding that, and the assurance from the author, that we were gonna get the property maps, we were gonna get the property listings, we were gonna find out exactly where these properties are, that we would get the report from land management on the impact that this will have from the Subdevelopment Review Committee or the Development Review Committee, that all of that would come to us in order to make the, to make the decision that we're going to make with the way this bill is presented. And, and, you know, given those assurances, we moved it out of committee. We haven't gotten any of that information, and I'm very hesitant in, in moving forward on this. I'd ask that we just give land management the 45-day required by the, by the new statute, but, you know, the, the body, as well as, as the committee members, all felt that they wanted to move forward on it. And so I'm leaving it to the will of the body. I'm advising the body of the status of, of, of what is required by statute, and we're waiving all of those requirements. That's why there's an notwithstanding provision clause. I'm advising the body of the promises that the committee was given, that this information will be made available, and none of it is available at this time. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Sir Speaker, on the motion, Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill, because my, my understanding is that a lot of these excess lands that have been returned have been returned with no zoning to it. And consequently, the land use, or Department of Land Management, the Land Use Commission, were really kind of in a dilemma in that they felt that they did not have the power to assign a zone to a piece of property that is not otherwise have a zone designation attached to it already, but that instead their powers really is to amend a, an existing zone on a piece of property. And so my, my understanding then is that this bill really responds to that, in that basically, after having realized that many of these excess lands return unzoned, it then provides... the basis for the Land Use Commission to then carry out the process with which they are charged with. Now, if subsequently then, the A-zone is not the desired zoning that the landowner wants, but instead wants it to be commercial or industrial, then at least the Land Use Commission has a point of departure from which to act on. But if, you know, if we're going to, so from that basis, I think 377 as amended certainly is very appropriate in this legislature establishing that policy so that then the executive branch, in particular the Land Use Commission, can carry out their work to assign the appropriate zoning to that property. So I stand in support of the bill, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ada. On the motion, I recognize Senator Respecho.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 377 and for the record, I support the amended version. You know, it's, I want to commend the sponsor for trying to move an issue forward that previous legislatures have been trying to address in the very manner that he originally proposed, which met the objection of many of us here, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, originally, if all of these lands were returned to the government of Guam and then subsequently returned to the original landowners, if they were returned and designated agricultural zone, you know, Mr. Speaker, would have added insult to injury. Because as we've seen with the Punta dos Amantes area, if one who is no longer a member in this legislature, but if that Senator had their way, Mr. Speaker, and there was a blanket designation for those properties, you would have been turning over prime real estate properties, some of which are now hotel zone, commercial zone, residential, multi-residential. You would have turned over those properties and have this government designate them agriculture. And when it's, and if the families chose to sell those properties, we would have just essentially through legislation and by law dumbed down the value of those properties. And so I want to rise to commend the sponsor for being open to find a way to avoid and prevent these unintended consequences. I want to rise in support and to thank the chairman of this jurisdiction, the Committee on Lands, for saying that, you know, he had his objections, but the process is the process and that provides that ultimately be the will of the body to reconcile any differences. And so what we have before us, Mr. Speaker, is an amended version that still designates these properties agricultural zone, but if the landowner themselves want to have the property zoned, what the designation, what the majority of land contiguous to that returned land is, then the property owner can suggest that. I want to suggest that this is a very intelligent way of handling the situation because as we know, the Guam Land Use Commission cannot move forward unless the property is zoned and the organic data provides that the legislature does the initial zoning. And so if we zoned it agriculture, we're going to have problems with the dumbing down the value of those properties. But in this case, if we zoned it higher than what the landowner is originally ready for, again, we might be adding insult to injury because of the tax base will be on a hotel zone or commercial zone. So in this case, we're telling the landowner, the original landowners, we congratulate you for seeing the return of this property that was taken away by the federal government and your property is Zone A, but if in the event you feel that you want to have some kind of development in this property or lease it out or sell it, they can always elect to have that zoning automatically match the majority designation in that area. And so, you know, we don't want the landowner to get a hotel zone property and have them have to pay these high property taxes when they're not ready to move forward at all. The property may still need to be surveyed, the family has to develop some kind of ability to have these properties surveyed and put on the market. And so I, and then reading this amendment here, it doesn't have any timeframe. And so if five, 10, 15 years from now, the family is ready to move forward and they decide, okay, we want it to be hotel zone, we want it to be commercial zone, they simply just tell the director of land management that that's what they would want to have that property zoned by availing themselves to this new section of law if it were to be passed and signed by, passed by this body and signed by the governor of Guam. So I rise in full support of Bill 377 as amended and I'm saying this is absolutely reflective of a compromise that I believe everybody can live with and it's really a win-win situation for especially those landowners who get their property back. So thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, you're recognized. Are there any other senators who wish to be heard on this bill?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, this whole subject, of course, was something we thought about a couple of legislatures ago and after, you know, speaking with the chairman of lands and also with some of the individuals in land management and even the whole process that we went through with Punta dos Amantes. And with that particular case, that was a little bit different because all of those properties have been identified and the whole area, of course, we're only talking about one specific area. We're talking, in this bill, we're talking about any land base, it can be anywhere in the island, not really knowing specifically what specific lots that are being considered here. I like to remind our colleagues, of course, basically just what the law says. I think that's really very important. You know, we pass laws and we expect everybody to follow the laws and we expect, of course, the appropriate departments or agencies to enforce these laws. But what is troubling for me, and I say this because ultimately, I guess, when the time comes that anybody should be criticized, it's always going to be the speaker of the legislature. And I want to make this very clear and be part of the journal because in 2 GCA, for the legislative branch, of course, chapter 2, our statute, and if you look at section 2108, the title is Separate Consideration of Unrelated Matters. And I'm going to quote because this is not something that I'm making up, that any bill introduced, considered or passed by E. Legislature of Guam or any of its members shall not contain more than one subject matter and shall not contain unrelated subjects or pertain to multiple projects except for one annual budget bill or a supplemental annual bill, annual budget bill. The second is on section 2110, Land Zoning Consideration Reports Required by Land Zoning Legislations. Any bill that seeks to designate a particular zoning for any real property shall not be placed on the legislative session agenda until a land zoning consideration report has been issued by the Department of Land Management. This bill, of course, was actually then passed again, both of these passed by the legislature. Now, on the surface, when we look at it, we might think, yes, it's harmless, but at the same time, why are we passing laws and then now we're going to again just go against what we've passed? And granted, you know, this whole argument is that because we do it, we can go and undo it. We can't tie the hands of future legislatures, you know. But this is the same legislature, the same members of this legislature in which the land zoning consideration report was passed. And in that, of course, the whole idea with that is that we want to make sure that this report, that they consider several things in this report, that the director of the Department of Land Management and the department's land planning division should then put as part of the report. And this is critical because once we designate this as agriculture and then later on, sometimes down the line, maybe the families might decide, well, we want to go up, you know, a higher designation, a higher zoning based on the purposes. And it can go as far up, yes, as even the hotel designation, it can go to industrial designation. But by following the law, which requires that a land zoning consideration report should be then submitted, these are the things that they're asking for. And these are very important for us to think about because later, when a landowner has decided then to take a totally different zone from agriculture, all they have to do is go to land management and say, okay, I want hotel zoning, or, okay, I want industrial zoning, but these are the requirements of the land zoning consideration report. One, the recommendation of land planning division. Will they be able to get that? No, because they're just going to let land management know that this is one. Two, if applicable, the recommendation of the Application Review Committee. Will they be able to review this when the owner decides this is what he wants? No. Number three, a map of the subject property. Well, that probably, I'm sure then, because they want to come now and present to them the property of their map so then they'll know where it is, so then the designation will be made. So that's one out of so far six. Four, a contact listing for the surrounding property owners for the purposes of notifying surrounding property owners of any public hearings or other public discussions to be held in regards to the zoning designation request. That will not be done because this is already going to be after the fact. So you're not going to contact now the neighbors and any one of us could be neighbors of any one of these properties, but we would not be able to provide any kind of input because it's already a done deal. Five, evidence of any consultation made at the discretion of the department with other permitting governmental departments and agencies and the property owner in consideration and review of the requested zoning designation and the outcome of any such consultation. That again, you know, they're not going to go to all the different departments that are going to be providing the permits. There's no need to go and do that already. And one of the biggest concern we always have about rezoning, of course, and the type of rezoning is how is it going to impact, you know, our waterlands, especially if it's up in the north? How is this going to impact as well, again, you know, not just our waters, of course, but then there's the solid waste as well that has to be considered. You have the Department of Public Safety and the Fire Department, all those would have to provide some kind, normally they would in a regular process, and even EPA. Well, none of those then will be considered. And then lastly, input from the municipal planning council of each municipal district to be affected by proposed zone change. And these, I mean, the way this is written, the way it is in the law, was crafted to really make sure that we follow, not just the laws, but we follow the, normally the normal procedure, but it's like an expedited procedure rather than going to the Department of Land Management to request for a zone change where it would take so long. Now, one member did say that and I agree, and there's no argument on my part, that yes, these are properties that have not been zoned. So therefore, we want to give it a designation, at least the lowest zone, which is agricultural zone, which actually would help landowners in terms of taxes, in terms of paying their taxes, because it is at the lowest level. So therefore, when you pay taxes agricultural zone, it's not going to be as expensive as if though, let's say, we're going to just blanketly say another type of zoning that then would actually cost more. And I don't think, you know, our residents, our landowners would want that. But the bottom line here for me, Mr. Speaker, not that I disagree in terms of how we at the legislature and something we don't want to take away completely as well, I agree with that, is that all these non-zone properties should come to the legislature, yes, for the zoning and at least with it coming through the process, it doesn't go through, I realize, everything that an individual would have to go through with the zoning committee, but there are similar, parallel-type requirements, you know, for them to provide that it can easily then come to the legislature because naturally they're motivated to get this all done to, because, you know, rather than wait for the government, because sometimes, yes, the government can be slow, to get all of these documents together, to put it and package it, of course, where then it can be submitted to the legislature for us to be able to zone these properties. And then the best part of this, of course, in this whole expedited process, is that where it says that should then the department need an extension, they can, of course, notify the chairperson of the committee within, you know, 45 days, a timeframe that's granted to them. But even more so is that if the government fails to respond to meet the deadlines then that's required by this section of the law, is that then it can be waived. The report then to be sent to the government, to the legislature then can be waived. So, I mean, we've made it really so much easier, it's more friendly, you know, to the landowners. But, you know, like I said earlier, again, and to go back to the first section of the law that says that any bill that's introduced is a one-subject matter and even that is something as simple as to maybe, probably to, because you know that I do this every time, Mr. Speaker, when there is a bill that's put before the body to rezone, I always ask for several things. One is, of course, is that have they gone through the process? And many times, no. The second is, can I see the map? And I want to see the map because I want to look at the surrounding areas to make sure too that it is in conformance to, you know, our existing laws, but more important is to make sure that they really do not impact our environment. Because as you know, not the entire island does not participate in the government sewage system that, you know, and we have, of course, leaching fields and septic tanks, you know, and the concern is, and that's why we have a law that they should be half acres, because we want to make sure that we don't kill ourselves. I mean, we're passing all these laws to then eventually impact on the health and the environment, you know, of our people. So we got to stop and think about those things, about the long-term impact, not the immediate impact today. So I caution, of course, our colleagues that, you know, really stop and really think about this. I mean, why do we pass legislations if we're not even going to follow it ourselves? That's the most important thing. And, you know, I'm not arguing again, like I said, that we're the only ones that can go in and zone a piece of property that hasn't been zoned, hasn't been designated some zone. I mean, I really don't understand. I mean, this puzzles me. As much as, yes, we spoke about this at the time when it was going to be placed on the agenda, suggestions were being made, the chairman has made some accommodations by adding, you know, a language that, no, that's not the bill. The language that actually says that subsequent to the return of the land, that the landowner may opt for a higher zone designation up to a zone designation consistent with what the lands are contiguous to the land return. But, you know, but this again is, you know, it's open-ended, there's just no ending. And that is something again as well that seriously should be considered, it should, this should never be open-ended because we don't know what's going to happen. We want to make sure, like I said again, the most important thing to me that I want to protect always is our drinking water and making sure that whatever sewage, solid waste and things of that nature do not seep into do not seep into our drinking water because we're going to end up, of course, just, you know, affecting the entire community. And, you know, we talk about a lot of contamination in our water. We talk about the health of our people. We talk about the cancer that our people are suffering right now. And we talked about liti- liti gobodik. And then we're all trying to figure out, what is the common thing that everybody needs to survive? And that is our water. And that we need to protect because without that, we have nothing. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mr. Minority Leader, Mr. Senator Frank Blasch, you're recognized. So then I have Senator Palacios after you. Are there any other senators that wish to be heard? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand in support of the legislation as proposed. I recognize though that, and maybe the author can yield or a committee chair, the question that I have is with regards to the provision here on may opt for a higher zone. I recognize with regards to initially, the legislation as proposed was to designate all parcels as agriculture, but then subsequently, the language that was subsequently included says that again, opt for a higher. Now, is the opting for the higher, is there a process for which these lands were going to be? If an individual wanted to opt for a commercial or, you know, or even an industrial zone, is there going to be a process? Is the process going to be put in place to be able to justify, if you will, for lack of a better term?
Would you like the author to respond? Senator, you go to the question.
I certainly do, Madam Speaker. And in order to do that, I think I have to go back a little bit. There are families who are in this situation, who are begging for a zoning designation. The families that approached me to draft this legislation have sought consultants, are paying them to prepare to go to the Land Use Commission. It's time-sensitive, their issue. They only wanted the A. I introduced this as only being the A. I worked with land management, planning division, who completely agreed and testified when they came here. I tried my best, Madam Speaker. But the feeling of some very good members of this body said, there are situations where the majority contiguous property, why would you hold that person to have to go through that process when they border the majority of their contiguous property to a zoning other than A? That made sense to me. So at this point, in the spirit of the law, in the spirit of the way it's written, understanding that the selection of the higher zoning designation is only because that land is already in that zoning designation, because it's border property, if it's a hotel, like what happened in Punta Dona de Montes, I believe almost in every case, those properties were zoned the way they were zoned on that one-time chance to do so, the majority designation of the contiguous property. So you're not going to do anything in an area that's not already happening. So I'm up to the will of the body if we go back and go to the agricultural zone so these people can not come here and have to find their favorite senator to get it at least A to be introduced so that they can go before the Land Use Commission. These people are at the mercy of us because there's no other way for them to get a land zoning designation. So the reason why I have to do that in order to explain it is because that is the dilemma that exists. They need a zoning designation so that they can do their due diligence, follow the law, go through the Land Use Commission. They want to, but they can't unless they got a basic zoning designation. So you're right, Madam Speaker. The original reading of this bill, the bill that was heard in a public hearing, and the request that was made by those who are begging to just, please, just give me a zoning designation, make it A, I'll do my work. But they can't. They're frozen. Otherwise, they have to come to one of us and say, please, take lot XYZ, make it A, live with our process months and months and months, and then hope to arrive at GLUC and go through another year, probably. But they can't get off the dime without having a zoning designation. That's the only purpose of this legislation. But to be practical, I acquiesced. And I said, that's right. It makes sense to have a contiguous lot zoning designation because why would you penalize a person? My neighbor has commercial. Ninety percent of the border of my neighbor is commercial. Why should I be A? But I have no problem going to just A if we can get the support of this body so these people can go and have their day in court and go before the Land Use Commission. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Please state your point of order. Yes, I was just going to ask you, right? The question that Senator asked you...
So the answer is, the answer is, there is no process at this point. It is a selection based on the majority contiguous property. Simple example, you have two lots side by side. This one's returned unzoned. The neighboring lot has majority commercial. They can select majority because the contiguous lot to them is majority commercial.
Senator Blas, are you satisfied with the answer?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I think that with regards to my concern here was the process. Well, maybe the next question I ask is, to who do they go to be able to make this known? Is it to this body, or is it to land management? Or is it to...
Senator, you go?
Yeah, the way it's written, they would simply inform the planning division of the Department of Land Management that this suspend their selection to the majority contiguous land. And then Planning Division would go forward and prepare the map for review. They would have everything done, of course, with their surveyor, have the map prepared, have it... You know, another thing is, we do have in law also, Madam Speaker, already majority zoning selection. We amended that in this legislature because there were some loopholes on minor pieces of property. So that's not nothing new for this legislature to do. So it'd be similar to the zoning designation selection. It's actually just putting that back into statute again here of the majority contiguous property that exists in law right now.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think then, for the purposes of clarity, I'd like to be able to propose an amendment here that the landowner may opt, or after may opt through the Planning Division of the Department of Land Management for a higher zoning designation. That way, it's clear as to who they go to to be able to articulate and to, you know, express their will in as far as the option. Because when it says may opt here, who do they go to? You know, whereas if the bill was to be left alone, automatically, everything is agriculture. But if there's going to be some opting, there has to be somebody they need to go to. So I propose to amend on line six, after opt through the Planning Division of the Department of Land Management for a higher zone designation.
So the amendment is, after the word opt, to the Land Management Planning Division?
Well, you know, if they're going to exercise the option, what I want to do is put here where they need to go to be able to ask for that. And so the way that it's going to be, subsequent to the return of the land by the government of Guam, the landowner may opt through the Planning Division of the Department of Land Management for a higher zone designation. Or opt for a higher loan, I'm sorry, may opt for a higher zone designation.
Can we take a brief recess so we can write, put your amendment together?
Thank you.
...back in session and we're still with Senator Blas on an amendment.
Thank you Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the amendment, and I apologize and thank you for the time for, to be able to draft it. I think copy of the amendment is on everybody's desk. And that will be on line six. And it'll read, after the landowner, comma, through the Planning Division of the Department of Land Management, comma, may opt for a higher zone designation.
On the amendment, Senator Tom Ada. Do you, so.
Okay, so I'm speaking?
So on the Blas amendment.
Yeah, on your amendment.
Yes, on your amendment.
Well, I stand in support of this amendment, Madam Speaker, because it makes it clear that the landowner has to go through the Planning Division of the Department of Land Management. But I think, though, that the amendment really needs to go just a little bit further. And if you read just a couple more words further, it says that the landowner may opt for a higher zone. And when I see the term "opt," it's basically conveying that, no, that's not what I want. This is what I want, and then that's what's going to be granted, as opposed to, as opposed to, maybe if that term was, if we didn't use the term "opt" and instead use the term "apply for," then that's quite different, because then it connotes that you have to go through this process of reviewing that if, in fact, you're wanting, let's say, a commercial or an industrial zone, then, then by applying for a higher zone, then, of course, that has to go through, that has to be put under scrutiny. But, you know, the way it reads right now, the landowner may opt for a higher zone. And I realize that the amendment that is being made is to put in the phrase, "through the Planning Division of the Department of Land Management." So I'm fine with that part. Would it be appropriate for me to make an amendment to the amendment?
No, because this one is still before that, so we just can dispose of Senator Blas's amendment. Then you'd be able to provide an amendment, a separate amendment.
No.
It's in the first amendment.
I can amend the amendment.
Is that what I do a second amendment?
Well, no, because it says, he's not changing, may opt.
No, that's why I'm making an amendment. Oh, I see. The amendment to the amendment will be on the phrase, "through the Planning Division."
Yes, because his amendment is just through the Planning Division of the Department of Land Management.
Okay, so I'll just save my amendment for later then.
Okay, so on the Blas amendment, any objections? No objections? So ordered.
Thank you, Madam.
Okay, now Senator Ada, do you want to then make an amendment?
Yes, Madam Speaker, so.
Yes, that's true, but I'm going to allow him. Well, I'm being, you know, the whole focus here is to try to make this a better bill that's more, to be acceptable by everyone, and so, yes, I will allow him to speak.
I'll just speak for about one minute, Madam Speaker.
Okay.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to proffer an amendment on line six of the bill, where it reads that the landowner may opt for a higher zone designation. I would like to change that word "opt" to, and use the term instead, may apply for a higher, may apply for a higher designation. So it was then to replace the word "opt" with the word "apply."
On the Tom Ada amendment, any objections? No objections? So ordered. Anyone else? Oh, yes, I have on the list to speak on the motion, Senator Palacios.
Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 377, with all the amendments, of course, that have been made. I remember, Madam Speaker, in the 29 Guam Legislature, I think former Speaker Mark Forbes introduced a bill. I remember, I was a member of that legislature when this came out, and I thought that that bill passed. And at that time, we were dealing with all this land return with no zoning designation. And that's the first time that I knew that only the legislature has the power to zone, because the Territorial Land Use Commission would only rezon, and so therefore, they cannot do anything. Bill 377, Madam Speaker, is not a rezoning bill. It is actually a zoning bill, so that the initial zoning of all land returned would be automatically agricultural. So that that way, then it falls under the jurisdiction of the Territorial Land Use Commission. And it gives really the people the option, if they still want to come here to the legislature for so-called spot zoning or special consideration, of course, this legislature still has that power. But so as the property owner can now go directly to the Territorial Land Use Commission and apply for that. So I rise in support of this bill. It provides an additional avenue for property owners to develop their land and to do what they want with their property, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, does there anybody else who would like to speak? I'm giving you the opportunity, Mr. Vice Minister Speaker.
Quickly, Madam Speaker, and, you know, I guess it's fortuitous that the retiring speaker mentioned the fact that there was this proposal before, and what we ended having to do was come back to the legislature and do the more comprehensive plan. When they wanted to do that, we thought that was the best way to go. We didn't, you know, we didn't consult the land agencies. We didn't consult the planning agencies. We didn't take a look at the overall impact of this type of multiple designation of zones to unzoned property. So when Senator, the good speaker, Senator Forbes at that time, wanted to do everything agricultural so that they could move forward, we found that based upon all of the, once the thing went into law, everybody came out of the woodwork and said, hey, you know, it really doesn't serve my purpose. What happened here? What happened here? That's why we even went, and the author is very familiar with this, because he was instrumental, and I want to thank him, when we introduced the Punstan Dos Apantais Plan. That we went back and redid these things in order to get a little bit clearer picture of what we're doing. And so, we still don't have that type of input, and I really think, what's the rush? I mean, is it because, what is the rush in doing all this? You know, I deal with the landowners. When they come to me, we try to help them. We explain what we're doing. And at times, their understanding of it, and as a matter of fact, two of the individuals who testified at the public or submitted testimony, when I explained to them what the impact was this, was, well, then my testimony is wrong, because that's not what I want. That's not what I thought I was going to get. And I really believe that we're going to find ourselves back in here when we do this thing without taking the time. We already have a successful roadmap to achieving what we want to do with regards to the land use designations for these unzoned properties. And the author of this was a contributor. properties. And, and the author of this was a, was a contributor to that successful plan. Uh, and I really think we just need to, I just don't understand why we need to do this today, why we can't devote the same type and the same care that we did for the others, uh, and give the people at the onset what they need and what they want, when we can accommodate that based upon reasonable and rational land use planning. Uh, and, and we don't have that here now with the way we're approaching this. We were promised that we were gonna get that information, we don't have it. We, we're violating and circumventing our own law that we just put into place to assure, you know, some reasonable and rational, um, notice to landowners surrounding them, even if it's contiguous. I still think that these surrounding landowners need to be told, need to be informed, even if, if they're gonna be the same zone, that you've got something here going that is going to impact you. And because not everything is surrounded by, you're gonna find that some are, some are touching an agricultural zone, some are touching a commercial zone, and we said, of course, it's the dominant one, but still, what does it do to the guy on his south neighbor who's agricultural, and now he's gonna have, who's growing pigs, and now he's gonna have R2 next to it, because the guy, and these are large parcels, these are large parcels of property, uh, in most instances, or when they get subdivided, they become small. How do you, how do you treat the subdivided property right now? Already, that's been subdivided, you know? So, again, it can have a domino effect, and I just think that, you know, we put this thing forward because we were assured that we're gonna get the maps, we were gonna know how many of the properties had been subdivided, we were gonna see where they're at exactly, and I really, you know, would, would ask the body to consider to just go a little slower. We're not gonna say we're gonna stop. We're just gonna say, the last time we did this, we had to come back, redo everything, put some land planning aspects into it, and give the people what they want and what they need. And this way, we're just, this is our convenience. What we're doing here is for our convenience, you know? And as Chairman of the Committee on Land, I'm willing to put the same kind of work, and it was a lot of work to do the Punta Dos Amontes Plan, but I'm willing to dedicate that effort once again to ensure that at the beginning, we do what, what will serve the people best. And this way, we're trying to shortcut that process, and I ask the body to please consider where we've been, where we had to come back to in order to do it right, and, and based upon that, this is not the same, this is not the process to do that. It's not that it can't be, it's the beginning of it, but it just provides all other ramifications that we really haven't considered, because we want to do something convenient for ourselves, or convenient for one or two landowners, you know, at this time. What about the 10, the 20, the 30 that are out there, you know? So, that's, that's really all I'm trying to impart upon this body, uh, giving a little bit of history of what, what happened, what we had to do, and what we had to redo. So, thank you, Ensign Dusmasi. I don't oppose this per se, but I really think we need to go a little bit further and, and pay attention to the individual estates on this matter, and not just the one or two, uh, that, that may have, you know, been the one most urgently requiring us to do this, and that there are others out there that we don't know how they feel about it, and we don't know what's gonna be the impact on them. And most importantly, we're not telling all of the surrounding property owners what we're doing to property contiguous to theirs, and how that may affect it, their property, their use, and its value. Thank you, Ensign Dusmasi.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. Uh, before I invite Senator Duñez to close, is there anybody else who wishes to be heard? Seeing, seeing no hands, I will recognize Senator Duñez to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I certainly understand the sentiments of the retiring speaker. And not to use an excuse, but there is notwithstanding any other provision of law within this, and it starts the bill, but I also want to mention that I made personal contact with the chief planner, and I discussed this issue, and like many colleagues on the floor have spoken about, because in the context of this not being a land zoning, rezoning bill, it's an initial designation of zoning, and especially with the A designation, and it fit their plan, as we discussed in terms of the land use plan, that's why they even submitted written testimony in favor, Mr. Speaker, with regard to this legislation. But notwithstanding that, Mr. Speaker, I really agree, and I thank the members of the body who have made the bill much better, and have actually put back in that provision, uh, and as I'm gonna do now, Mr. Speaker, of having that requirement to be upheld as well. So, we've already got the applied, we've already got those two steps with planning. So, the third step here will be now, uh, to go to 2GCA, Chapter Two, Title Two, Chapter Two, Subsection Two, One, One, Zero, and what the amendment now will read, Mr. Speaker, will be to add a new subsection to the bill to read, and it will be a A. So, if we're following along here after line eight, there will be an A, and this will also satisfy Madam Speaker's request as well. And under A, it will basically be adding all of those subsections, three, four, five, and six, as the requirement that we have so well put into place in this body just recently. So, basically, just to go through it real quick, would be, "Any landowner who applies for a higher zone designation applies. In accordance with this section must submit to the Planning Division of the Department of Land Management a map of the subject property, a contact listing for all surrounding property owners for the purposes of notifying surrounding property owners of any public hearings or any public discussions to be held in regards with the zoning designation request. Evidence, number three, of any consultation made at the discretion of the department with other permitting governmental departments and agencies and the property owner in consideration and review of the requested zoning designation and the outcome of any such consultation. And number four, input from the Municipal Planning Council of each municipality, municipal district, to be affected by the proposed zone change." So, we will go ahead and put that in statute to, to really completely comply with the spirit and intent of the body, uh, as, as we have, as I've mentioned. It wasn't sheer laziness on my part, it was in consultation with land management, but understanding that this is very vital, I've, I've been, I've placed this back in, and the members of the body have, have made it very clear what has to happen here. So, I think we've made it a, a better bill, and, and we'll take into consideration everybody's concerns, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to close on Bill 377.
Well, I'm not sure if I'm gonna take that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if I'm gonna take that as a closing, because that was a fairly major amendment, and so, I'm going to ask the body if there's anybody who wishes to be heard on the amendment that you've now just proffered. Any member wish to, to speak? Because I know the clerks here are having problems with the entire language, little, they, it's 2GCA.
It's prepared. Want to take a recess and we'll circulate it? It's prepared, Mr. Speaker, in, in typing text.
I don't think anybody has any questions with it, it's just the clerks, the clerks here that are having problems. They don't realize that it's 2GCA, the, your, your law that you're adding on to the bottom. But, um, are, that's part of it, I believe. So, does any senator wish to be heard on, on the, the amendment? If not, then, then I will take that as your closing, and your motion to place it in the voting file. Any objection?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. The next bill on the, is it, Mr. Majority Leader, 328 or 435?
328.
Bill 328, Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place Bill 328 in the third reading file, be allowed to briefly speak on it.
There being no objection, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 328 facilitates the judicious and responsible conduct of special events where displays of wine and liquor are sampled and tasted under responsible controlled conditions on approved premises by the holder of a valid off-sale license, wholesale dealer license, or agent license issued by the ABC Board. What we have now, Mr. Speaker, is, um, current statute that really is very vague in allowing off-sale license holders to be able to, to conduct, you know, special wine tasting events, and we've seen more and more of that happen, um, recently, Mr. Speaker, with nonprofit organizations using this as a way to raise some funds for their, for their organization. Um, what we have now as well is, when these, when, when it's done properly, when these organizations have these events, would have to either purchase the, the, the item from the supplier upfront, pay for the corkage fee to the hotel or wherever establishment where they're having the event, which in turns, um, has, you know, you know, which in turns, you know, makes it harder for the organization to make as much money as they could in these fundraising efforts. And so, what this bill does, Mr. Speaker, is set it clear in statute that these types of events would be allowed. The board, the ABC Board would then, um, would then promulgate rules and regulations that would dictate how these events are, are held. We had, um, several suppliers, off-sale license holders, testify in favor of this, um, in favor of this measure. We also have members of nonprofit organizations who have expressed their support in having this legislation move forward. And so, I'm asking my, my colleagues, Mr. Speaker, to, to favorably support this measure, and ask again to that this be placed on the third reading file. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. Any member wish to be heard on Bill 328? Was, was your hand going up, Senator Pangolinan? On 328? Oh, um. Any senator who wished to be heard on Bill 328? Seeing none, Senator Rodriguez, you're invited and recognized to, to close. Any objection to the motion to move to the voting file, 328? No objection. Next bill, 435. Senator Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ensign Dusmasi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 435 dash 31 COR is substituted by Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Governmental Operations, and Public Broadcasting be placed in the third reading file. I'd like to discuss the bill.
Do I understand that there is a, an amended or a substituted version?
Yes, that's the, there is a substit-
So, then, the, the motion to accept, there being no, no objection to accepting the substituted version on the motion to place it on third reading with discussion, seeing no objection?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, um, Bill 435 proposes to do two things that would change in the current process for, uh, accepting and procuring health insurance, uh, for the government of Guam employees. Uh, now, the first one is that this body passed a law that, uh, allowed the governor to appoint an extra member to the negotiating committee, and the author of the legislation was very clear in the discussion on the floor that that additional representative is supposed to be a representative of the general public, that it would not be another government employee, uh, and that the intention was, because all monies used to procure health insurance are taxpayer dollars, and that, um, in the discussions, that we wanted to present a tax, an individual to represent the taxpayers to make sure the government is getting the best deal for the tax dollar that is used to provide this benefit of health insurance for the government employee. And so, um, what occurred was that the first time this implementation was made, um, that this general public member turned out to be a secretary at the front office. And so, um, the, after reviewing that, we, we wanted to ensure that the original intent of the bill, uh, was that this individual would be that general public member. And so, uh, the bill amends it now so that one member of the general public appointed by the governor, continue, who is not an employee of the government of Guam, an employee of a health insurance company, hospital, or medical provider, or an appointee by the, um, and so, it would be to, to add the fact and read, further define who this general public, uh, member of the general public is. So, he would be somebody appointed by the governor, he would be not an employee of the government of Guam, also not an employee of the health insurance company, hospital, or medical provider, because of the conflict that may exist, uh, and also not an employee appointed by the governor to a position that requires legislative confirmation. So, it truly then is a representative of the public who will look out after the public taxpayer dollars that are used to purchase that. And in, in, um, so that, that is the first change in the bill. And then, the other change of the bill would, um, open up the ability of the negotiating committee to try and maximize providing the best price and benefit for the government of Guam employee by allowing companies that present a qualified proposal based on the request for proposal criteria, and it's a very extensive criteria, in which each element of their proposal is giving, is given a score. And what this would do is that if your score gives you a passing grade, then you kinda get a, get a, get a card to the dance, so to speak. So, if your proposal meets the qualifying criteria set by the negotiating committee, then you will be allowed to negotiate with the government of Guam, so that you can actually have more than one company negotiating with the government of Guam to try and get the best deal that you can for the tax dollar that you're gonna be using to purchase this benefit for the government of Guam employee. Uh, so, that, and then also requiring that the proposal will include both an exclusive and a non-exclusive. And what that means is, you know, since I, I sent you a chart out also for the, for the information of the members, since 1998, the federal, I mean, the government of Guam employees have always had a choice in who they buy their health insurance from. So, from, from 1998, they had three choices, 99, four choices, 2003, all the way up to 2007, the government of Guam employee always had more than one choice, and only in 2008 did the government of Guam move to a single choice for the government of Guam employee, basically no choice. And so, the bill would require that anybody who submits a proposal would submit two proposals, two elements of a proposal. One, in which there is only one carrier, and the contract goes to a single that would be the same as what we have today, or two, they would also present an alternative in which they would be willing to make an offer to provide service, uh, health insurance benefits on a non-inclusive basis. So, they would also give us a pricing for if it was non-exclusive. And it is up to the committee to evaluate that based upon the exclusive versus exclusive and non-exclusive versus non-exclusive, and when they see that we can get the same deal or a better deal with a non-exclusive contract, they have the ability to decide to open it up to more than one choice. If they find that, that the non-exclusive contract is too expensive, then they can do, go to the exclusive choice. But it would be to just require that every proposer presents an exclusive and a non-exclusive, uh, contract, uh, proposal. And so, this really is the gist and the heart of it, and I wanted to present an amendment, Madam Speaker, and that's been also passed out. Because we have now a non-government employee on the negotiating committee, uh, there are requirements for ethical behavior, confidentiality, that all the retirement, uh, I mean, the negotiating committee are bound by, by virtue of being a government employee. So, by virtue of a government employee, you have these ethical standards, confidentiality standards that apply to you. But now, since we have somebody who is a non-government employee, and by the way, there, there already is an appointee, uh, for the non-government employee, and in fact, this time, they are not an employee of the government of Guam, although they happen to be the same person that was appointed last year. But what I, what was suggested was that this non-government appointee will now be required to sign an affidavit that the member of the, of this- that the member of this general public shall affirm by affidavit that he or she agrees to comply with the provisions of Title 15, Title 4, Guam Code Annuitate, also known as Standards of Conduct for Elected Officers, Appointed Officers, and Public Employees. So it binds them to the same confidentiality, ethical behavior standards as the other negotiating committee members. And we wanted to ensure that the integrity of the confidentiality of the negotiating team also applies to that non-government employee. And I propose this amendment, Madam Speaker, to give comfort to everyone that's proposing a contract to the Department of Administration ensures that all members are operating under the same restrictions. So that's my first amendment, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, Senator Blatche?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I recognize where the mover of this amendment, you know, would like to continue to ensure the integrity. But I don't know whether, my concern here is that this is an individual that's appointed by the governor, does not have to come through the legislature for, in as far as confirmation. And I'm concerned with regards to that this standard is set for here, but what happens to all other non-government employees in as far as their membership in others? Is that going to affect, or does that affect all other non-government employees in all other commissions? And so my issue here is basically recognizing as far as what the concern is, I don't know whether it's proper to put it here or it should be different legislation to be able to require that of all non-government, you know, member of the public members to other commissions. And so, you know, I have, I've got a little bit of concern with regards to the precedent that going to be setting, the legality is going to set. I recognize and I know what he's trying to do. And my concern here is whether or not this, there's a legal question with regards to it. Maybe the author of the amendment can yield to the concern.
Speaker, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I will, Madam Speaker. This amendment is being made to the health insurance statute, the negotiating committee statute that sets its membership. So it does not apply to the other boards and commissions. The other boards and commissions, there's really nobody else that is kind of covered by this situation in terms of serving on a negotiating committee for the government of Guam. And so this makes, ensures that that individual, most especially because they're not subject to legislative confirmation, that they bind themselves to the ethical behavior. Now, all of the other boards and commissions, when they're appointed, they actually take an oath of office. They're sworn in to abide by, you know, the Constitution, the laws of Guam, I mean, the laws of the United States of Guam, the laws of Guam. So they bind themselves to this provision by virtue of being sworn in and being confirmed. This individual is not bound by that in any other way at this time. So this would ensure that that individual that is appointed by the governor would bind themselves to the ethical behavior standards of the laws of Guam as it relates to their role in the negotiating committee. So that's really the intent here. And it doesn't, like I said, we don't have to do that to the other boards and commissions because they all are given an oath. And in that oath, they all attest and bind themselves to these standards as well.
Senator, was it answered your question?
Thank you, and I appreciate the response from the good gentleman from Baragata. And, you know, Madam Speaker, I guess my concern is when you look at this, it says, "Also known as Standards of Conduct for Elected Officers, Appointed Officers, and Public Employees of the Government of Guam." This individual clearly is not, is not, does not fit an elected officer, is not an appointed officer, it's an appointed member. And clearly is not a public employee. I think that, you know, with regards to my concern and everything, I want to take the time to do some of the research with regards to the, to, I guess, you know, what this statute basically provides, you know, and who is supposed to, who this is supposed to be applicable to. I'm not sure whether the applicability is to this individual, recognizing that although, yes, it's part of the negotiation. I just, you know, if we're going to put teeth in this thing, let's make sure the teeth is, you know, that it stands in legal scrutiny, should there be one. Again, I understand and I recognize where the author, where the mover of the amendment is going. I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure that it can stick legally. Thank you very much.
You wanted to respond?
Yeah. Is it applicable? I believe so because we are saying that the member of the general public that is appointed pursuant to the statute that makes him a member of the negotiating committee has this set of standards and they hold themselves to that. They don't have to be a public official because we're already saying that it is that member will operate under this standard. And so I believe it is very specific that that member is bound by this, even though they may not meet the definition of elected officer, appointed officer. But it is that standard of what is contained in that that this person says, "I will hold myself to that." And we are very specific that that member will be bound by these standards. Not as, not by virtue of being an appointed officer, not by virtue of being an elected officer, by virtue of him being a member of the negotiating team. So I believe we, that is, that would apply to this and may give some comfort to the, to my good colleague on his very legitimate question, that we are in fact doing what we want to accomplish by this statute, by this amendment. So I thank him for that opportunity to clarify.
I think we should take a brief recess. ...that she's proffering that, you know, might be a qualification to be placed here. So Senator, I would, can you please again repeat that?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If I am understanding the language correctly, the intent of this measure is to ensure, or one of the intents, is to make sure that the member of the general public that's being appointed is not an employee of the government of Guam, not an employee of a health insurance company, hospital, or medical provider, and not an appointee by the governor to any government agency, board, or commission. Correct? And so my idea, my amendment is to add that word "not" on line four in front of "an," and "not" on line five in front of "an" again, just to strengthen that idea that this appointee will not be any of these, in any of these categories. That's all.
Okay, then. Okay, but...
Just reiterate "not."
Yes, okay. But before I do that, I want to dispose of yours. But I wanted her to share that so that, make sure that then the, when we talk about the qualification of the member of the general public, because that means that person is not either, either from any one of these. Okay, so on the Pangolinen amendment? Hearing no objections? So ordered. Okay, so on the Pangolinan amendment, hearing no objections, so ordered. So then with Senator Yamashita's earlier proposal then to clarify is to add the words then "not" on line four, "not an employee," and then on five also "not an appointee." So on that amendment also without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. I recognize Senator Respecho.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 435-31 raises probably, in my mind's eye, an even bigger issue in how this whole negotiations occur and how the negotiated benefit is developed and how it's adopted for the GovGuam active and retiree. You know, Madam Speaker, you recall maybe three or four fiscal years ago, we had a situation where the previous governor signed, signed off on the results of the negotiation team, and that, that proposal was $20 million shortfall. So they, so I'm, I'm wondering if this would give us an opportunity here based on what the mover of Bill 435 is trying to do, to provide a process by which the negotiation team comes up with the negotiated, the benefits that they like to negotiate, have commissioned someone to develop a pricing for that benefit, and then come, and then you would have the legislature appropriate the money, and then the governor sign off on that appropriation so that when the negotiation team moves forward, they know that if $50 million is available, this is how much they're going to negotiate. They, even a couple fiscal years ago, although they knew that $50 million was available for the health insurance plan, that benefit jumped up to $71 million. And then there was a $21 million shortfall where it left the, both the legislature and the incoming administration wondering how that shortfall was going to be budgeted. You recall for two cycles, we had a health insurance contract with the government of Guam that does, that wasn't even signed by the Attorney General. And we raised those issues with how can a contract be executed with the government of Guam absent the Attorney General's signature. We had members of this legislature raise the procurement issue and how that whole process was negotiated, and the Attorney General, or how that contract was consummated absent a certification officer. And the Vice Speaker raised that issue, and the, and the Attorney General, I believe, said that the certification requirement is not required for this particular contract because the health insurance contract is budgeted on all the department's and agency's budget. Therefore, it would be up to the certification officers of each government of, of each department and agency. And so, so those are the issues that I, I want to raise is how can we provide for a process to provide the specific amount of money for the negotiation team to negotiate the best benefit for, for all of the active and retiree GovGuam employees? And so in thinking about that, I also want to present another scenario in, in Bill 435, Madam Speaker. It seems to me that the negotiating team should be the ones to develop the minimum qualifications for the proposals that's going to be submitted for health insurance coverage. And I spoke with the sponsor of the bill, and that requirement is found in the current RFP process. The other thing I wanted to do is to require that the negotiating team develop a ranking system to rank the proposals, and I'm also told that's also in the RFP. But I'm wondering if there would be any harm to move my amendment notwithstanding the fact that it's in the RFP so that it's, it's something that would be in the statute. And so based, if 435 were to be, were passed and signed into law, you would provide a scenario, a situation where the negotiating team has to negotiate with every qualified bidder. And so if five qualified bidders want to participate in the upcoming health insurance program with the government of Guam, if you don't have a ranking system, Madam Speaker, it's likely that the negotiation team will be negotiating with maybe someone who came in number four, but at the end of the negotiations, that, that number four, if they were ranked, might be number one in terms of selection. And so I, so that's my amendment, that we, we provide in statute that they develop a ranking system to rank the proposals so that the negotiation, negotiating team is well aware that when they're negotiating with one particular company, this company did not come in number one, but yet the law requires that they still negotiate with them.
We're going to take a brief recess. Legislature is back in session. And we are on an amendment that's being proffered by Senator Respecho. So on the amendment, is anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? Are there any objections to the amendment? Hearing none, so ordered. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the, Senator Respecho?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, now that the amendment is passed, I'm wondering if it might be prudent for us to, to follow through and limit the number of qualified bidders that they negotiate with, because what if, for instance, they have 20 qualified bidders? And so now you have a ranking sys, now you have a ranking system based on 25 or 20 qualified bidders, and there's just not enough time to negotiate with every single one of them and give each one of them, you know, the due diligence and attention that that company deserves. And so maybe we could take another minute recess to speak with the sponsor and maybe the legislature's representative to the negotiations teams to see if now we should cap the number. We have a listing here. Well, this just shows the number of companies that we have, but gone anywhere from four, four as low as one healthcare provider, but I'm wondering if we should say the top three? Yeah.
Yeah. That's reasonable.
Yeah, so if I can offer another amendment that the, that they should just negotiate, where would that be? Yes, so on line 21, and enter into negotiations with all health insurance providers, with the top three health insurance providers.
Top three rated.
Top, yeah, top three rated.
And you'd like that to go on page two, line?
Yeah, line 21, Madam Speaker. Enter into negotiations with the top three rated.
With, okay, so on line 21 after the words where it says, enter into negotiations with.
Yeah, with the top three ranked.
With the top three ranked.
Ranked, health insurance providers submitting a qualified proposal, submitting qualified proposals for health insurance coverage.
Okay, so on that amendment, Senator Respecho, I mean, not Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, now this, this new amendment, which I wholeheartedly support, makes sense now with the previous amendment that, that we just passed here, which now, you know, we're saying that we still must have a ranking system in place because without changing it with this amendment, that, you know, it really didn't make any sense to have that because then you would have to negotiate with all providers that submit, that submit proposals. So this amendment, I think, clears up that, you know, that, you know, that potential confusion, you know, so I wholeheartedly support this amendment. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the amendment, hearing no objections, so ordered. On the main motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak? I don't have anyone on the list. So, okay, Senator Rodriguez, and then Senator Guthers. Senator Rodriguez, no, Senator Rodriguez, and then, yes. Senator?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in, in support of this, of this legislation. You know, I had the, the ability to be able to be part of this negotiating team in the last go around as a new statute that we've, that this body has, has, has enacted, which placed the Chairman of the Health Committee and the Chairman of the Appropriations Committee as ex-official members. And so I, I see the value of, of Bill 435, Madam Speaker. Bill 435 does not mandate the negotiating team to only choose one, or two, or three, or multiple providers for health insurance coverage for our employees, our retirees, and our dependents. It simply puts on the table all the options out there that will help the negotiating team make a sound and fiscal decision on which provider to choose. And so I think this is something that, you know, as a member, I ask my colleagues to, to, to support because I, I know on the last go around, when you're only negotiating with one, with one provider, you always have that thought in your mind that what's behind the curtain? What's behind the others that provided proposals? Because we, you know, we did, I think the negotiating team did a very good job last, last year in bringing down the rates about six, 6.5, $7 million from the previous, from the previous contract. And so, but that question was always there, is that had we been able to speak and negotiate with the others that were behind that curtain, what kind of savings could that have been, you know, for our community, for, you know, for our island? And so any way that we could ensure that we get the best bang for our buck, I think, is a good thing. And so this is, this is something that I think is good for, for our people and for our community. So I ask my colleagues to, to please support it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I recognize Senator Guthers.
Madam Speaker, I just want to echo my colleague's comments, and I support the, the bill and the amendments to the bill. I think the bill is a good bill. Of course, as co-sponsor, I think the bill's a good bill. And in considering the amendments and other amendments that have been made, I think it'll make the bill much stronger. Our goal is to get the best deal we can for the people of Guam, our retirees and our GovGuam employees, but also to be prudent and reasonable in our approach. And I think the bill and the amendment, and the amendments do that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, anybody else? Okay, I'd like to give the author then an opportunity to close. Speaker Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I thank my colleagues for their deliberation on this matter and their contribution to some of the amendments that would allow greater clarity in the implementation of this should the governor decide to sign it into law. So I, I'm very grateful for that and ask them for their continued support when it comes time to vote. I also just want to state for the record that the way that the bill's structured here in section one, where we, we say that we're adding and amending section 4302C, that underneath C, there's one, two, and three, and we're not amending those sections, only the introductory paragraph to those sections that are being amended. So that's just construction again, to be absolutely clear for the legal counsel, that C1, 2, and 3 are not being amended at all, and it's just that introductory paragraph. So I want to thank my colleagues, ask for your consideration. I think this will give us the opportunity, and that's really what we've been missing, the opportunity and the authority to proceed with talking to everyone that has a qualified proposal that can result in savings to the government of Guam, better service, better coverage. Whatever the result would be, you can only find that by talking to somebody who has presented you a qualified proposal. And that's all this does, is it opens up that door. So thank you very much, and since this was, and I move the bill as amended, we place in the third reading file.
On the motion, to send the bill as amended to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill number 405, Mr. Vice Speaker, okay, Mungy, Vice Speaker, take a brief recess. Take a brief recess. The legislature is back in session. Recognize the Vice Speaker in Bill number 405-31.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. For, I'd like to make a motion, place Bill 405-31 in the third reading file, and I ask an opportunity to just speak very briefly.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, this is a very simple amendment. I apologize for the body. When we passed the bill last year on shark finning, I neglected to include one, um, one other family. There were eight, and we left out squaliformes. We included squantiformes, but we didn't put in squaliformes. And in order to include all eight families of sharks, we need to amend the legislation and add that. And so I ask for support from the body. It's just a simple inadvertent error that we made last year, and I'd like to just clarify it. Seeing as how it was being used as the template for all the legislation around the Pacific, we're going to need to probably get everybody else to add their eighth family and also after we get this cleaned up. But it's just a very simple amendment. I thank you for allowing me to make this amendment and to include this family. Thank you.
Well, you got to keep the family together. Okay, so on the motion, anyone like to speak on it? Only under the condition that you pronounce every single one of the family members correctly. There being no objection, then to send it to the third reading file? So ordered. Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move, notwithstanding the House rules, that we suspend any further discussion in the second reading file. Then we proceed to the voting file and vote on Bill 435 as well as the three confirmations.
And 435 on engross?
And to have it vote without engrossment. Thank you.
On that motion, then, without any objections? So ordered. Clerks, I'd like you to read, please, the title of Bill 435.
Was it 435? That's the only one? Bill number 435-31 COR, a substitute of the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting, introduced by V.C. Panglinen, J.P. Guthers, B.J. F. Cruz. An act of amendment, Sections 4302(c), not including subsections C1, C2, and C3 of Article 3, Chapter 4, Title 4 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to negotiating and procuring health insurance services for the government of Guam.
Madam Speaker, can we have a brief recess? Yeah.
Then take a brief recess. The legislature is back in session. So will the clerks please take a call for the vote?
Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthers? Senator Mobini? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Panglinen? Senator Respecio? Senator Rodriguez? Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Juan Pat?
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita? Senator Duñez? Senator Mobini?
Senator Respecio, can we get to excuse Senator Munia Barnes?
Madam Speaker, I move that we excuse Senator Munia Barnes.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. So substitute bill number 435-31 COR received 12 yea votes, two nays, and one excused absence. Substitute bill number 435-31 is duly passed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Monti Muffness.